Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, April the 15th Board of Commissioners Meeting. What an absolutely gorgeous day we've had today. God is good. This gentleman that I'm about to introduce to give us an invocation has been here numerous times, Reverend David Morris from the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of the Outer Banks. But he is also a newlywed. This past Friday night, Reverend, come on up here and give us a congratulations.
And congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I begin with a place of gratitude for the obvious reason, but also with gratitude on behalf of the North Dare Ministerial Association for the chance to be here today. Let us pray. Holy One, Spirit of life and of love, God of many names, whose highest name is always love and compassion. As we gather for this commission to do the work of the people, we begin by giving thanks for the gift of life, for all of the many gifts that bring us each to this place in this time. We are grateful for this lovely place in which we live, both on its beautiful days and its harsher ones. We are grateful for the many gifts of this community, which, as we have been reminded in this very week, come to the fore in times of tragedy and trouble, as well as in times of joy and celebration. We give thanks for those who give so generously of their time and their thought and their energy, for the well-being of this community, for its governance and its leadership, for all who are elected, for all who are on staff in our county, for all of the many, many people who give so freely of their time, of their energy, as we will witness tonight with the recognition of volunteers. It is a gift to be among so many who give so much. Holy One, may we be reminded in this time of the most vulnerable among us, those whose lives can be most profoundly touched by the decisions that are made by this body, whose health and well-being and very lives may depend on the work that is done here. May they be ever-present in our thought and in our minds and in our hearts. In this time, which is for many, this week, which is for many the holiest of the religious year, may we be reminded that all of the faiths of the world call us to take heed of the most vulnerable. May these people entrusted with the sacred responsibility of leadership, may they govern wisely with the best of thought that they have, may they be guided always by the principles of justice and equity and compassion, to which we have all been called by the scriptures of our faith's traditions. This we ask each of us and all of us in the name that each holds most holy. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
What a great-looking crowd out there this evening, standing room only. Look forward to these recognitions in just a few moments. I would like to recognize, we've got one elected official in the audience this evening, and that's David Winley, I mean, John Winley from Kill Devil Hills, Commissioner Dave. John, thank you for being here this evening. I just wanted to recognize him, and once again, thank you all for being here, and I will turn the meeting over to our county manager.
Mr. Chairman, item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you. I just have a few things to go over this evening. Really, really excited about the fact of three, three things that's happening with College of the Abrahams. I serve as a trustee on that board, and most of you here this evening are aware that this board has stepped up to the plate, and we're going to build a new facility right here in Mania, classrooms. We're really excited about that. Three things recently have happened, and that is, there's been an upgrade of the library at Elizabeth City Campus, and that dedication was held just recently on April the 4th. The bond, and the funds for Help Us With the Campus was passed just recently, and this past Monday, last Monday, our RFQ went out to businesses for a request for qualifications so that we can start moving forward and picking somebody so that we can build this new facility. And sadly, but one sad thing is our president is leaving, but the search committee is looking, and we have a meeting, I have a meeting tomorrow morning in Elizabeth City with the Finance Committee to pick a consultant, to go out and search for a new president, a COA. So a lot of good things happening. We're very, very excited about the potential here in Dare County for COA and building this COA, oldest community college in the state of North Carolina. 2019, Dare County is in its 50th year of operation, 50 years in Dare County, quite awesome, really proud of that. As you very well know, early part of this month, the 2nd, this entire board was involved in the bridge ribbon-cutting ceremony, the bridge to Hatteras, replacing the old Bonner Bridge in name of Mark Bassnight, and we all attended that function. It was a very, very nasty day, nasty day, but it was, the tent we had was completely full, and it was a big crowd, and I want to thank the board for their attendance and being there and support of that. Then just recently, Vice Chairman Overman, who chairs the Saving Lives Task Force, last Thursday evening, held a meeting right here in this room with Dr. Murphy to talk about the opioid crisis in our country and our nation, throughout the nation and our state, and it was very, very informative. That is the 12th meeting, town hall meeting, that the vice chairman has held, and they're really, really working hard and doing great things on this task force, and I commend you for your work on that, Vice Chairman Overman. And please keep in mind, keep your thoughts and prayers for the folks that owned the Christmas mouse, just recently, the fire that they had on the beach. Please keep the owners of that property and your thoughts and prayers as we go forward. And then certainly last, but not least, Tiger Woods won his fifth jacket yesterday, his fifth green jacket, so quite a Sunday afternoon, very, very exciting. Mr. Towne County Manager, that ends my chairman's report.
Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this evening and you've not signed up, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. You have five minutes to make your comment. A green light will come on when your time begins, a yellow light will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light on the podium comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. I do not have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to speak at public comment this evening? Anyone here for public comment? Seeing no hands, is there anyone in Buxton for public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment, and we'd move on to item three on the.
Boy, did you see that photo that just showed up there? Did y'all see that? There was some empty seats sitting back there behind there.
All two of them.
All two of them.
Chairman, next we have Lorelei Costa here from the Outer Banks Community Foundation to present the 2019 Governor's Volunteer Service Awards, and Lorelei, the podium's yours.
Lorelei, how the heck are you?
I'm very well, thank you. How are you?
Very good. I'm excited to hear what you have to say today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. I would like to echo a sentiment expressed early tonight. It is a gift to be among so many who give so much. Did I get that right? How beautifully put. My name is Lorelei Costa, and I am the Executive Director of the Outer Banks Community Foundation, and it is my honor to help recognize some of Dare County's finest volunteers tonight for the North Carolina Governors Award for Volunteer Service for 2019. I'm not here to talk about the community foundation, but since I have the microphone, three sentences. The community foundation is a 37-year-old nonprofit, and we hold and manage the charitable endowment for the Outer Banks, for Dare County, for Ocracoke, for Corolla, and it is composed of 185 different charitable funds set up by individuals, businesses, civic groups, nonprofits, all for different charitable purposes. That's my first sentence. We invest these funds, and we use the earnings each year to give out grants and scholarships. I have a board member with me here today. Her name is Linda Hester. She's in the middle of reading hundreds of scholarship applications. We're the largest scholarship provider in the Outer Banks. We're one of the largest grantmakers in the Outer Banks, and it's our honor to do that. But really, I'm here about volunteers across Dare County. The Governors Award has been around for 40 years, and it showcases North Carolina's most dedicated volunteers. Certainly Dare County's volunteers are among them. We all know the value of volunteerism and how it plays such a huge role in making Dare County the wonderful place that it is. These dedicated folks make a significant difference and touch many lives. So it's my honor and privilege to present awards to a host of committed volunteers. And Bonnie's going to help give out some prizes. Okay, our first honoree is a volunteer with a truly giving heart. She gives anywhere from six to 20 hours each week in between two working jobs. Among other volunteer duties, she helps to teach camps during the summer with Dare County Parks and Recreation, and she's a coach with Dare County Special Olympics. This volunteer is learning new sports and attending trainings along the way, and has become certified as a bocce, track, and basketball coach. She travels to four different schools for track practices, as well as to meets. She gets the best out of all of her athletes, encouraging them to push themselves and to try new and more challenging events. If that's not enough, she also raises money, obtains donations, prepares meals, creates encouraging signs for the athletes, and plays a key role in organizing track meets. According to her nominator, no problem is too large and no task too hard for her to tackle. She always works with a smile on her face and laughter in her heart and touches everyone around her. So would Laura Davis please come down to receive this award?
Congratulations, Laura. So by the way, what do you do in your spare time?
Our next honoree is someone that I've already introduced you to, but she also serves in many capacities at the Dare County Center. She helps to coordinate the center's annual toy drive, which serves almost 500 children. She teaches classes to older adults about safety, finances, relationships, elder abuse, advocacy, and more, and her advocacy efforts have helped many older adults save their homes and advocate for their own medical needs, improving their quality of life in the process. This volunteer teaches youth classes about finances at the center, and also volunteers at the center's Autism Awareness Walk, ALS Awareness Walk, Dare to Scare 5K, Sweet Treat Fun Run, Veterans Celebration, and Volunteer Celebration. She is dedicated, energetic, enthusiastic, and always looking to improve the quality of life for our older adults and youth. She has also served on the Dare County Center's Advisory Board since its opening. She also serves on the community foundation's Board of Directors. Fun fact, she ran her first marathon a few weeks ago, a few months ago. She's getting ready for a Spartan Race, which is like this crazy obstacle course where you like crawl through mud and go through ice cubes or something like that. And right after this meeting, she and her husband are doing premarital counseling through her church. She got, what, a master's in? Anyway, this woman is a whirlwind. She's wonderful. Her name is Linda Hester.
Linda, congratulations. What was your time, by the way?
Our next individual has been a volunteer with the SHIP program at Dare County's Baum Senior Center for 18 years, and SHIP stands for Seniors Health Information Program. In that role, she offers guidance to the coordinator and helps with many aspects of the program. She counsels clients year-round, but each fall during the two-and-a-half-month Medicare Open Enrollment Period, she is especially busy volunteering daily, counseling clients on complicated Medicare insurance options. Her client list fills up very quickly each year due to the high volume of client requests for her services. The coordinator of the SHIP program doesn't hesitate to recommend this volunteer to anyone with a complex need. In addition to counseling clients, this volunteer promotes SHIP throughout the community, at health fairs, and also giving presentations to churches, town hall meetings, et cetera. This volunteer is so knowledgeable and experienced that new SHIP volunteers often shadow her to help them learn the ropes. So would Mary Ellen Holland please come down and receive this award?
Mary Helen, congratulations. And by the way, anybody that can advise somebody on Medicare issues, God bless you.
It's not so hard, once you know what you're doing.
Our next volunteer has served as the board president for the Network for Endangered Sea Turtles for the past three years, also known as NEST. During the last year alone, this volunteer has been active in every aspect of the NEST organization, logging well over 500 hours of volunteer service, both in public and behind the scenes. Among the highlights of his volunteer service over just the past year was his work with the Simply Southern Clothing Company. Thanks to this leader, this clothing company donated $29,000 to NEST to help with sea turtle protection, and this will be an ongoing partnership. This volunteer presides over six board meetings, drives an ATV weekly during nesting season looking for sea turtle crawls, works at several fundraising events, gives sea turtle talks to the public, oversees the distribution of volunteer t-shirts, and works with U.S. Fish and Wildlife on volunteer trainings. Last year, he watched an active sea turtle nest for two weeks, ultimately witnessing a successful boil, which I think is the thing where all the little sea turtles come out, making sure that 130 baby loggerheads made it safely to the ocean. He is always quick on the scene of stranded turtles, and he works with the aquarium on Roanoke Island to transport cold-stunned turtles and help with rehab at the aquarium. So would Dennis Poehl please come down to receive this award?
Dennis, congratulations, and that work you do is incredible. Thank you for what you do, for protecting those lives of those sea turtles.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, our next individual serves as a volunteer with Dare County Parks and Recreation, and the Girl Scouts, and Dare County Schools, and the SPCA. I am told she has never once said no when asked to volunteer for anything. For Parks and Rec, for example, this volunteer has worked every special event that the department has to head to offer, from the annual Easter egg hunt to gymnastics lock-ins. This volunteer has a soft-spoken way that makes each child feel special in whatever they are doing. During the past year, she has helped to make meals for the Special Olympics track meet, and she helps set up and take down gymnastics equipment. According to her nominator, every program she has touched has been made better. Would Jonna Lewis please come down to receive this award? Our next honoree has been the coordinator for Dare County Special Olympics for the past several years, and, talk about a whirlwind, this woman is a force of nature. As the local coordinator, this volunteer does everything: schedules practices, recruits volunteers, completes paperwork, liaises with the statewide Special Olympics, and raises funds from groups like mine. She is also the head coach for the swim team, but she finds time to help coach many of the other sports teams as well. Her nominator estimates that she serves at least 50 hours each month with the Special Olympics, and I've worked with her a lot, that's probably very fair. During the past five years, this volunteer has worked hard to make the program financially stable, and this past year, when storm flooding ruined much of the organization's equipment and uniforms, this volunteer found solutions via grants and service groups in the community to make sure that the equipment could be replaced without the participants feeling the burden of the loss. Her fundraising efforts year-round help to assure that local athletes are able to participate and compete at no charge. Truly, without Kathleen Morgan, Dare County Special Olympics would not be where it is today. So would Kathleen please come down to receive this award?
Kathleen, thank you. You're a special person for what you do for those special people.
They are the special people, and everybody up here, thank you for your support, whether you know it or not, we support our athletes. And let me give a plug for our annual spring games on April 27th. My life's goal, be there.
And she has the best smile in Dare County.
I wish she'd get excited a minute.
I am honored to call our next volunteer one of my friends. She is a mentor with the Dare County Friends of Youth Program, which serves at-risk young people. This volunteer is matched with a 16-year-old girl and is an excellent role model for her, always taking the time to listen closely to her mentee, engaging in conversations about difficult issues in the teen's life. This volunteer also makes sure to have fun with her team, and throughout the past year, she and her mentee have made many special memories together, often doing ordinary things that most people take for granted. The volunteer encourages her mentee's passion for music, and she often makes their time together a family affair by including her mentee's brother in their activities. The Dare County Friends of Youth Program is extremely fortunate to have this woman as a volunteer mentor. Many other local organizations also benefit from her commitment to community service, including the Beach Food Pantry and the Dawn and Catherine Bryan Cultural Series. She also takes personal trips to Africa to help at an orphanage there. She is an incredible young woman. Would Julian Kelly please come down to receive this award?
Julian, congratulations for what you do. Great work.
Thank you.
So looking around the audience, I think our next honorees have some fans in the room, but I'm just guessing. This husband-and-wife team are longtime Scout Masters for Boy Scout Troop 116 and Cub Scout Troop PAC 116 in Kill Devil Hills. So why are they being honored today? In early 2018, a parent of one of their Cub Scouts was diagnosed with cancer. This couple decided that as scouts, the PAC and Troop had a duty to rally in support of the parent and his family. This couple sprang into action and organized a car wash fundraiser on June 30th. The scouts and volunteers received support from the Kill Devil Hills and Collington Fire Departments, and word of the fundraiser spread quickly on radio and social media. Thanks to the Scout Masters' leadership and compassion, Boy and Cub Scout Troop 116 raised over $5,500 in support of the parent and his family. Through this fundraising project, these Scout Masters taught their scouts the importance of community service and helping others in need. Volunteerism and helping others are traits that are learned, and the nominees used this opportunity to teach the boys the importance of helping others, understanding the crisis that cancer can cause a family, and the benefit of serving one's community. And I can promise you that that support for that family made all the difference in the world to them. So would Blair and Marion Seiferman please come down to receive this award?
Blair, Marion, congratulations on what you do. That disease affects way too many folks in our country, and God bless what you're doing for that family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do want to do a 10-second plug, if you don't mind. Angel, I would like to introduce you to Alice Burke's girl, registered Cub Scout for Dare County.
We have another husband-wife team to honor. These volunteers are retired educators who volunteer with Kitty Hawk United Methodist Church. While they sometimes volunteer separately, they also assist each other in a variety of church and community activities, and Linda might tell us that that's a good balance for a couple, you know, doing some things together, some things separate, maybe. The husband performs a myriad of volunteer tasks each month. He helps with church finances, conducts adult Bible studies, tutors community children, helps teach an adult Sunday School class, and volunteers at the Beach Food Pantry, helping to stock shelves and assist clients. The wife in this amazing couple also spends countless hours volunteering for the church. She is one of the leaders of the church's Women's Ministry Fellowship, organizing fundraisers, group lunches, mission projects, et cetera. She also volunteers at Peak Resources in Agshead, helps with Ruthie's Kitchen, and is an active participant in the church's prayer ministry, sending cards to shuddens and others in need, and delivering flowers and food to homes. The couple partners together on a prison ministry in Elizabeth City, as well as on the Walk to Amaz... ...program, a three-day retreat on Christianity. With the church, they also serve as ushers and communion stewards, even taking communion to homes when requested. Together, they volunteer with the church for a combined 200-plus hours each month, not each year, each month. each year, each month. So they're like the definition of the retired couple, who say, "I've never been busier until I retired." So, would George Viverett and Cheryl Tillot please come down to receive this award?
George and Cheryl, congratulations. At those 200 hours, it tells me y'all just sleep at the church.
They are dear, dear church friends of mine, and I can tell you, they put in the hours. They're amazing.
That's incredible. That's incredible.
And now for the Governor's Medallion Award, which is the most prestigious volunteer award in the state. The final volunteer has been nominated for and will receive the Governor's Medallion Award for volunteerish service at an upcoming ceremony in Raleigh. On January 4th, 2017, this woman lost her son to an overdose, following his long struggle with substance abuse. Soon after that date, she began advocating for a local behavioral health services clinic in her hometown of Hatteras to help others in their struggle. At the same time, Port Health Services and Dare County had agreed to partner and to open such a clinic on Hatteras Island, and renovation soon began on the former Hatteras Island Medical Center, which was in dire need of repairs and renovations. My original notes said that this volunteer raised $22,000 in donations and pledges toward the development of the clinic. That has since been corrected. She raised $36,000 in donations and pledges toward the development of the clinic. She also rolled up her own sleeves and assisted herself with the site preparation. She helped with the building's interior design, secured donations and local art, found people to replace cabinets, and made sure the workers had materials, food, and drinks. When it came time for the community to celebrate the completion of the new clinic, this volunteer secured donations of food, space, and music. This lady made it happen. Port Health and Dare County had a strong desire to develop a behavioral health clinic in Hatteras, but the money to renovate the building would not have been available had it not been for the efforts of this volunteer, and work would not have been accomplished within the expected timeframe without her assistance. But perhaps her largest accomplishment was to attack the stigma attached to substance use disorders by engaging an entire community in the process of bringing this clinic into being. Would Wendy Sisler please come down to be recognized for her medallion award?
The governor will be there at the medallion awards, and she will receive it from the governor.
Thank you, Bonnie. Nothing, nothing can ever replace the loss of a child. This board has stepped up to the plate, and will continue to step up to the plate, do whatever we possibly can to eliminate and eradicate this horrible, horrible thing that's sweeping our country. Commissioner Bateman, Vice Chairman Overman are working very, very diligently on these very issues, and this board is united in what we can do to make this turn around in our county, in our state, in this country, and God bless you for what you've done.
We wouldn't have been able to do it without you, so we thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Laura Ly.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Bonnie. Just a couple of additional comments. Folks, it's real simple, a great community. It doesn't get any better than this. It just does not get any better than this. Look around you. Look at the people sitting next to you, the amount of hours that's put into these different functions throughout this county. Not only does this county step up to the plate financially, but this county is a very giving county, and I could not think of any other place in this country that I'd rather live than Dare County. And it's people like you that make us proud. Thank you for what you do.
Chairman, before we go to item four, those of you that receive an award, if you'd go with... Where's Jennifer? There they are. If you all would go out with Jennifer here to get a picture, and she'll take you around to the front of the building.
You remember that picture earlier in the meeting at Buxton where they had them two empty chairs? Once everybody goes to get their picture taken for their awards, that's what this room's going to look like. County manager?
Chairman, that brings us to item four on the agenda, and this is a report from the Dare Soil and Water Conservation District, and Ann Daisy's here for that presentation.
Good evening, Ann.
Hi.
Had you sitting in the back of the room, you couldn't get a front-row seat tonight, could you?
No, I couldn't. There was not many seats to spare. Thanks for having me. It's been a while, been a wee bit busy. But before I got started, I wanted to introduce the district's board members that are present this evening. I have our board chair, Ricky Shepherd, selected official. I have our vice chair, Erin Fleckenstein, who is an appointed member, and Laura Eddy, who is also an appointed member, Paul Wright, who's an elected official, and then our third elected member, Matt Paulson, who is working this evening and was unable to attend tonight. I know it has been a while since I was last giving my quarterly reports, and since then I've been hired as a county employee, serving in two functions, as the staff for Dare Soil and Water Conservation District and staff for the Dare County Grants and Waterways Department. But I just wanted to give a quick update on some of the highlights of what Dare Soil and Water Conservation does and the services we provide to the community and funds that the district brings in to help with natural resource management, environmental concerns in the community. Oh, do I have a clicker? Yes, sorry. Is it on? There we go. Whoops. So, I know this isn't the best map, but part of the work that I do as district staff for the district and why we receive state funds from the Department of Agriculture, Division of Soil and Water Conservation is to implement best management practices in Dare County to help with water quality, whether that be agricultural production or in urban situations. And so this map, it's not the best map, I had to hurriedly put it together, indicates all those red dots are best management practices that have been installed by the district to help with water quality and stormwater runoff, and that is through the Community Conservation Assistance Program, projects such as permeable pavement, which allows for infiltration of our precipitation and stormwater runoff, instead of letting it run off the land, pet waste receptacles to encourage the community to pick up after the pet because of the bacteria and fecal coliform that can impact our water quality. We've done rain barrel, large rain barrel cisterns, which collect stormwater from roofs of buildings to prevent stormwater runoff, a lot of living shorelines or marsh sills to help with shoreline erosion, and rebuilding wetlands and marsh grass to help filter stormwater runoff nutrients and reduce sediment erosion from our shorelines. Our newest project is actually the town of Kitty Hawk converting their parking lot to permeable pavement at the police station, and a private property owner in Southern Shores experiencing shoreline erosion doing a repatriate buffer. And so these funds are issued yearly from the state in agriculture cost share program, and then the community conservation, which is urban-related, and yearly distributed. They are available to both public and private entities in the community. They apply with an application, they're ranked, and then whichever ranked the highest are then submitted to the state level to be ranked against other districts across the state. And every year since I've been employed with the district since 2015, we have always received funding to implement these kinds of projects in the community. So, one problem we struggle with in the urban cost share program is the limited funds, and the district board, along with other district boards across the state, have been working with the Association of Conservation Districts and pressing the state to provide more funding to that program, so we can get more projects on the ground. Another program that happens with soil and water districts across the state is stream debris removal, and this funding comp is usually appropriated for disaster recovery efforts, usually related to hurricanes. When I started, it was leftover funding from Hurricane Irene, and the most recent acquisition of funds has been from the state with Hurricane Matthew Recovery. And Kitty Hawk, the town of Kitty Hawk, I assisted them in getting quite a bit of funding to do some snagging, clearing, or stream debris removal in their ditch systems in Town proper. And then I'm still currently working on spending the Hurricane Matthew funding that I have received for unincorporated areas of Dare and projects thus far that are completed. My initial project was with remnants of funding from Hurricane Irene for Wonche's community, and then the most recent work that has been done is in ditches in East Lake and mainland Dare, and then Doze Creek. Unfortunately, I've been a little bit busy, and so I haven't been able to get to some of these other projects, but the remaining areas are southern portions of unincorporated Dare in Avon, Redanthie, Buxton, Hatteras, Stumpy Point Canal is on there, Moshues, and then I forgot to add Mans Harbor will be getting those cleared of vegetative debris. Another project that I've been working on the last two years, and this will be year three of working with removal of alligator weed, which is an aquatic invasive that is pretty much all over Dare County. If you've looked in a ditch or any body of water, you can probably find it, it spreads pretty quickly, grows seasonally, starts back in the spring. It can clog our waterways, prevent our stormwater drainage ditches and infrastructure from flowing freely when that grows. So, the state's Division of Water Resources has a cost share program with local governments and have been working with their staff every summer season on spraying alligator weed in East Lake, and this will be the third year that we're doing work there. And another big component of soil and water conservation is our outreach and education through division programs for education and then participating in any community outreach that I can to be able... It's one thing to put projects on the ground to improve our natural resources or protect water quality, but if we're not educating and reaching out to our community members on what our issues are, how we can be better stewards of our environment, it's not going to complete that puzzle or that picture. So just to highlight a couple that have been done over the years, I've reached, the district has reached over thousands of individuals, both into schools, community, with outreach programming, technical assistance, that means I get a lot of calls about drainage issues, aquatic invasives, how to manage their ponds, working with implementing stormwater projects, engaging community groups to understand stormwater and our natural resources and the environment, tree plantings for Earth Day, the annual bookmark contest, you've seen a lot of those every year, 13th year, trying to keep that continuing, sending local high school students to NC State for the Annual Resource Conservation Workshop, and they are funded by the district, implementing outdoor classrooms, providing workshops to the community for how to manage stormwater on their properties. When I'm sought out for help with assessing stormwater BMPs, I recently received my BMP certification through NC State and cooperative extension on BMP, or Stormwater Infrastructure Maintenance, which means when there's wet ponds, dry ponds, any of those kinds of infrastructure that need to be maintained to function appropriately. Speaking at low-impact development workshops, explaining the availability of funding through the cost share program, doing field days with local soil and water districts in the Northeast Region, career days, trying to encourage our youth, high school youth, to potentially get into careers in the natural resource field, working with tri-county master gardeners on stormwater management, and even starting to reach out and work with our mariculture industry, because they are technically, can be considered an ag producer in the aquaculture industry, and trying to work with them on their needs and what resource concerns they have, and working with other local districts on the coast to try to get our state cost share programs or federal cost share programs to have dollars and best management practices that they can access for their field of work. And a quick highlight on the financials for the district and funding that we've brought in since I started working, and you've seen this information prior, I don't need to run down the list, but the highlight I'd like to say is that for every dollar Dare County invest with funding, the match dollars for my salary and any other projects, you get a return of at least $18 for that dollar. So, and given the opportunity to be full-time staff, would open up more time to access more grants, especially dealing with the flooding and stormwater issues that we're experiencing all over Dare County. And then lastly, every couple years, the state Division of Soil and Water Conservation, which falls under the Department of Ag, is required to do a district program review because they are funding a portion of the staff's salary and technical assistance funds, and so we carry out, the districts carry out these cost share programs. The districts are a governmental entity run by elected and appointed officials that are required to follow state legislation policies by the Soil and Water Commission. And so every few years, they do these program reviews. I did recently send you the highlight summary of Dare's district program review, and I'm glad to say that we had zero corrective actions on our district operations and implementing the cost share programs, two recommendations and five commendations. So I'm very proud of the work we've done and the support that I have from local, our district board members, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad...
That's pretty significant, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
That's a pretty significant accomplishment by those folks.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Any comments, questions of Ann?
I'll just back up what Rob says there, Dare Soil and Conservation is, and soil and water is very visible, and they're doing good work. You gave some pointers to, they use a major remodel of a Buxton church down there. I mean, you just offered some advice, but they took it and ran with it, and it's gorgeous. Had enough rain here to really...
Good.
Put the native species and stuff, it works well, low maintenance. So thank you for that. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you for Laura, Ricky, and Aaron. Paul?
Yeah, thank y'all all for what you're doing. It's, it's good stuff, and I appreciate the board members being here and, and apologize to Paul Wright, the elected official, I announced elected officials earlier this evening. Paul, I didn't see you sitting back there, but thank you for being here.
Also, me too.
And Ricky too.
But thank you and your board members elected as well. Thank y'all for being here. Anyone else?
And if anyone ever has any questions, I'd be glad to sit down. It is a huge learning curve to understand the dynamic partnership of Soil and Water District, the state partners, the local partners, the federal partners, and it's.
I agree. It is a little complicated.
It is. And I will say that I finally got a grasp of it, and there is a learning curve, and I think the Division of Soil and Water, the state does know that. And our program rep for the Eastern Region, that's the first thing he said to me, he's like, and I was ready to hit the ground running, he's like, it's going to take some time for you to grasp the whole, the whole picture. And it is, and in hindsight, he was, he was right on. So.
Right.
So I would be glad to be able to provide any other at a later date, if you ever want to have any questions or discussion, I would be glad to fill you in on that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ann.
No problem. Thanks.
Thanks for your good work.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item five on the agenda, and that's our med cost medical insurance. As you know, each year prior to the budget time, we have to approve the upcoming year's medical insurance rate in order to get it in the budget, in order to get it in time for the things that we have to do. I think it has to be done by May, is that right, Elizabeth? By May? And so we do that early. This year might be the easiest decision that you make. After many years of hard work and, and many years of keeping our, our health plan and our wellness plan and all the things that Elizabeth and her team and Dave and his team do to try to get us fiscally sound in, in our health insurance plan, we finally accomplished one of our goals earlier in the year to do away with that deficit that we had in that fund. And the other benefit of that is this year, we have a zero cost increase. So there's no budget.
Sure, Chee.
New budgeted money we have to include in that, and it makes the renewal very easy for us when it doesn't go up. You know, we're a couple of catastrophes away from having, anytime having issues, so this is a, we need to enjoy it for this budget year, but we don't, no one knows what the future holds.
No guarantees?
No guarantees, that's right. But appears we're doing the right things and the things that we've been trying to do for a number of years are finally paying the dividends we'd hoped for, and that's a good thing.
Well, we've come a long way, and that deficit was four million plus at one time. So we've, we've done a lot, and that's just great news about the renewal.
Right. If y'all have any questions beyond what I just said, then Elizabeth's here and she can answer those questions.
Anyone have any?
Can you negotiate my private insurance form? Golly, this is awesome.
Yeah.
Really good.
It's amazing. Amazing accomplishment.
Yeah. Good work, Elizabeth.
Yes.
Thank you. I have, I have a team, there's a team of us, it's just not me.
Yep.
Thank you for your support.
So we need a motion to renew.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the fiscal year 1920 med cost medical insurance plan.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House, I mean, and who's second?
Rob.
Rob, okay. And seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sent? Motion carries now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items six and seven will be handled by Donna Creve.
Good evening, Donna.
Good evening. Item six is a request that my office received from Mr. Timothy Jeanette, and Mr. Jeanette is here. Mr. Jeanette, if you want to come on up here in case they have some questions for you. And he, Mr. Jeanette owns property in Buxton, and he has a ditch on his property, and that he has requested the county or he's asked the planning department to give him the authority to fill that ditch. And there's some language that's in chapter 51, which is the water ordinance of the Dare County Code of Ordinances that says before any ditch or stream or drainage way can be filled, it has to be granted, it has to be the subject of a public hearing and granted permission by the Dare County Board of Commissioners. So that's why we're here this evening. Mr. Jeanette called my office and said, Donna, can you give me permission to do this? And I said, no, sir, I can't. There's this language that's in chapter 51, and this is the first time that I recall standing up here and asking for permission to do this. And so included in your packet, and I, I put some photos in the packet, if those guys are there, we've got them up there. My staff went out there Thursday afternoon. This is the ditch that's on Mr. Jeanette's property, and you can see that there's some vegetative debris that's been placed in the ditch. The ditch is fairly deep. I'd say it's over, over six feet deep, and that's as it's facing NC 12. And then let's see if we can get this door. There we go. This is just another shot of it facing in the other direction as it, as it flows back to, toward the Buxton Woods area. This is the property across the street from Mr. Jeanette's. It's across NC 12, and you'll see that there's a driveway there. And there is a ditch that's on this property that actually has water in it. There's not any water on Mr. Jeanette's portion of it. And I included an aerial in the packet. Here we go. That's, that property that's highlighted in the red is Mr. Jeanette's property. You'll see that it's got just a little portion of it that fronts on NC 12, and then it crosses across this Mr. Alesskan's property, which were the other two pictures that I showed you. And then that's Mr. Alesskan's property. You can see across the street from Mr. Jeanette's where there is a ditch that eventually runs out to, to the sand there. Now, that ditch that's on Mr. Alesskan's property has been filled at some point in time. Obviously, it was filled without any permission from Dare County. I don't know how long it's been that way, but it has been that way. And I also have some, when we were researching this, actually, the way that I became aware of what Mr. Jeanette wanted to do, one of the adjoining property owners to his property came in my office and said, you know, I think my neighbor is filling his ditch, and we contacted Mr. Jeanette, and this is, we've gotten to this point this evening. I know that he's had the Corps out there, and he's waiting to hear back from the Corps, and I'll let him tell you about his conversations with the Corps, but. I'm going to hand this out to you guys so you can see this. I apologize for not including this in your packet. What this is, is a copy of an old survey that was attached to one of the DPs of the adjoining properties, and that's from 1986. The survey is, the plaque that's attached to that, actually, the plaque is the first part. That's from 1979. And that piece of, that property line there that's highlighted in orange is the boundary of Mr. Jeanette's property and where that ditch.
Can I get one of those, please?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, and Mr. Jeanette, there's one for you.
Thank you.
The reason I'm giving this to you is just to show the historical existence of the ditch there, and you'll see that it runs along Mr. Jeanette's property. And then on the second, the second sheet, there is a survey there that shows the ditch and the culvert under NC 12. There seems to be some question of whether the culvert is still there. When my staff was out there last week, their comments to me indicated that there was a lot of vegetative debris there where it would appear that the culvert may be, and they didn't shift through it, they didn't want to disturb any snakes that may have been waking up with this warmer weather. And so the, the section 51 says that before we can authorize Mr. Jeanette to fill the ditch, that we have to have a public hearing. And what the language actually says is that no permit shall be issued except after a public hearing after 10 days' notice on the question whether the proposed restriction or impediment would result in possible harm to the public health. So it doesn't really give us any criteria. And I'll let Mr. Jeanette speak and tell you why he feels like he needs to have it. I will tell you that from a planning perspective, that I am reluctant for us to get into the practice of issuing permission to fill ditches, just because we struggle with stormwater. I don't know what, if it is the pleasure of the board to do so, I think we need to try to establish some criteria, because I'm not an expert, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a stormwater expert, and so I don't know what impacts this will have. If he fills the ditch, I will tell you that he has started filling the ditch with some debris, and it's not dirt, it's not soil, it's vegetative debris. I don't know if that's come from his property or not. It is against state law to fill your property with vegetative debris that's not from your own property. And so I want to make sure that if we proceed and we do give him permission to fill the ditch, that he understands that he has to use the appropriate materials to fill the ditch. And so I'm going to stop right there and answer any questions that you may have and let Mr. Jeanette speak as well.
Good evening, Mr. Jeanette.
Good evening. How are you?
Bad. Come on forward.
Um, thank you for seeing me tonight, and Ms. Creve's been nothing but helpful. The ditch in question was dug by the WPA back in the 30s, and I know this because my grandfather was a foreman that dug the ditch. It was an attempt to drain the swamp, and he told them at the time, you can't make water run uphill, and they didn't believe him. And it was when the highway come through, they more or less covered it up back in the 40s and 50s. This is the only access I have to my land in the back. If you'll notice in the survey, the highland in the back, that's the only access I have is down that said ditch. There's some more backstory to the land, I won't go into it, but I mean, it's, it's been in my family for, since the 1800s.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to follow all the maps, Donna. We've got lots of maps, aerial photos and the black and white diagrams, and I must confess a certain confusion. I'm looking at the aerial with the orange or red outline of the property.
Yes, sir.
And I'm trying to visualize that with this. So that doesn't look like this. Tell me what I'm looking at.
It's not like that. So NC 12 is up there. That's NC 12.
The area is showing here on the aerial.
Ah, so there follows the left line of the red line.
If you turn it like this, that is.
I got you.
The, the property line of the, of that narrow portion of Mr. Jeanette's property as it runs to NC 12.
What is this?
This is the, this is Mr. Jeanette's property line.
Use the, use the 86, use the other one, it's going to make more sense.
Yes.
I'm struggling here. I'm sorry, I'm probably.
Your property, what's labeled as the Barnett property on this other, on this 86 map?
Yeah, so this is his property.
Yep.
His property is the, is that, is the one that's adjoining the cemetery. Now, this, this configuration that's on the 86 map is different than what's on the tax records now. This orange line here is this property line that runs right there on the narrow neck of Mr. Jeanette's property, if you will. That's, that's the ditch that runs through that narrow. When he's saying that he doesn't have access to his property, he's trying to fill in that ditch that's in that narrow neck that's on the aerial right there. You see that? So the western edge of Mr. Jeanette's property on that, on that whole portion of his lot, if you will, is that ditch that's highlighted in orange on the one, on the plaque.
On the 86 map, flip the maps, Donna, that 13.1 feet gap there at that point, is that the point of the red on this other map?
Yes. This line right here, it's that same line, that western line.
All right. Okay. And then the property widens from 13 to whatever.
It widens from back there, yes.
As you go south.
Yes, as you go south.
And it looks like on, on this map, there's only a small portion of the ditch that's totally in his property. Correct?
Yes, yes.
And the majority of the ditch runs just on the other side of the property line or right down the property line?
Yeah, over here.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it's, and it's hard to tell from the aerial where the, where the ditch exactly is because of the vegetation that's on the property. I looked at it on, on some other aerials today, and I couldn't get a better definition of it to show you.
Would there be a possibility of re-digging that ditch right on the property line, and then that way you could fill in the, the other part of the property that you could drop through? Would that be?
That's the only access, excuse me, that's the only access I got even, I talked to a contractor, and he said, you know, I got to have access. My property owner next door is not real friendly.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't want to, you know, cause any problems with the neighbors.
Right, right.
So it's, I had the Corps out there, the same property owner. I tell you what I did, I went up front, I just cleaned the brush off, and I threw the brush in the ditch, just so I could, you know, park there and just pull off the road. There's not even a room to park. And he called the Corps, and, and the Corps called me and said, we've had a complaint, I need to come investigate. And I said, yeah, sure, come on. And they came, and the guy said, look, he said, there's no standing water. He said, the only place that we would have a problem is towards the back of the property where there is standing water, and you'll see it on the last survey I did. He said, then we'll have to get permits. He said, he says, right now, he said, as far as we're concerned, you got a hole in the ground.
Got you.
Donna, I have a question for.
Yes, sir.
For you. Actually, a couple of questions. Number one, is it delineated wetlands?
The, no, sir. Will I say that? We have, there was a survey included in your packet. And it shows wetlands, and it's hard to tell from the survey that Mr. Rankin has done, because he has these, these little symbols that, that they typically use to symbolize. So from reading that, it appears to me that the wetlands run somewhere up there, but there's no southern boundary of that or northern boundary of that, but it shows the, the highland areas there. When you're on the ground, it, it would appear that, that there is, but the Corps guys are telling him, no, we have not had that verified by the Corps, though. He has a call unto them, and sometimes they're not necessarily timely in their response.
Yeah. And the second part, is it possible to put a culvert in and bury the culvert and still have the drainage? Because there is still, it, it's undetermined whether there's a culvert going across NC 12. There's still some ditch on the neighboring property according to these, these surveys, and that would still enable, if there was drainage, to go either way it goes.
Again, I'm not, I'm not a stormwater engineer, but I would, I would assume that there should be some way that you could modify Mr. Jeanette's portion of the ditch so that it runs back to, to the southern as it's flowing toward the ocean. The, the property across the street there, he obviously doesn't have permission to do anything there, and so I don't, I think that may be beyond the scope of what he's able to accomplish here.
If, if we have to have a public hearing, which the ordinance requires.
Right.
So we can't approve it. Have you, you've had an engineer, somebody come out there, I just, my question would be, if we're saying, if you're saying that it has no impact, it doesn't drain or whatever, then would an engineer come in and verify that it's a hole in the ground and doesn't provide drainage to any of the adjoining properties that? The key would be to make sure that by the ordinance, it can't negatively impact anybody else. If it doesn't, then they have.
I had an environmental guy come in and do the thing he gave to Don Rankin.
Well, he just said there wasn't any wetlands, but he wasn't checking the drains.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Right, so.
Is that the Corps guy, or is it somebody?
No, that was Atlantic Hydra, I can't think of the name.
Doug Dorman?
Yes, that's who it was. He, he did, he did that initially.
So I was just trying to find a way to.
Wetlands assessment.
Right.
To determine whether it was even an issue or not.
Yeah, I don't know what was just said. There was a bunch of things said, it was really quick.
He was saying, he said, the Corps guy came out there and delineated the property, and I said, was it somebody besides the wetlands consultant? And he said, yes, Atlantic Environmental's, and the guy's name is Doug Dorman, but, but somebody coming out there and delineating the wetlands is different than somebody coming out there and saying it's a hole in the ground and there's no, there's no impact on the drainage. So if that's the qualifier that we're going to need, perhaps the thing to do is to schedule the public hearing and let Mr. Dorman come in and speak on behalf of Mr. Jeanette, if he's willing to do that, since he's paid him, because he does have some, he is an engineer, and so he understands the, the topography of the site, and so he will at least be able to stand up here and speak better than I can about it anyway.
I guess my other question is, could you get DOT to confirm there is or is not a culvert under?
Yeah, that was my, my concern. I mean, that was put in there for a reason.
I mean, that was put in there for a reason.
Yes, sir, it was.
So, and then they, I mean, it's got to be there for a reason, so.
We can certainly try to have someone from DOT confirm that.
Well, in 1986, it was, Merle Meekins Jr. and Associates thought there was a culvert there because they drew it on the maps.
Is there a suggestion that a six-foot-deep ditch is not draining anything?
The premise is it's not doing anything because it's running the wrong way, if I'm understanding correctly.
It's got, it's got full trees growing in it. I've got some pictures here of me standing in the bottom of it. I mean, it's, it's two men standing there with a shovel, dug by hand, two guys with a shovel dug it across the top of that. And if you'll see on the, the overhead.
Initially, you said it was, it was dug to drain a swamp.
The swamp subtly. And the Corps of Engineers said, you know, he was there, he said, look, it's already running the opposite way now, it's running back towards the swamp. But it was dug by the WPA to drain the swamp.
So, so the swamp that they dug that ditch to drain is now draining on its own?
It drains, it drains in another direction. It drains in Peter's Ditch that goes out in Frisco. Everything, I grew up on that ridge, I grew up about quarter of a mile up the street, and so that's.
What I'm trying to understand is, is it draining toward the sound, or is it draining south?
No, sir, it drains back towards the south.
What was that?
The south being the ocean down there. I'm sorry, south being the ocean down there, we get, I get my directions up here, I have to think.
Why don't we just say sound or ocean? That way we can.
Yes, yes.
So it's supposed to drain to the ocean?
Yes.
It, no, it was originally dug to drain to the sound, but, but, but that was, and it was, but now it drains back towards the ocean.
If you look at that map and look at Highway 12.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Okay, instead of draining across his property, it's draining the other way, and then it goes down parallel until it hits Peter's Ditch, and then it goes to wherever Peter's Ditch takes it, which I think is to the sound.
Yes, it does.
Ultimately, but it doesn't drain across, by his, what he's selling us, it's not draining across the road into his property and then to the sound, it's draining the opposite direction. And it's not draining his property in the opposite direction either. The, the road is a bridge, if you will, so the two sides aren't draining each other. Am I saying that right? It's a dam between the two.
It's a dam.
Between the two sides of the road.
So, so, so water that falls, rainfall, whatever, on the west side, where this ditch is.
Yeah.
On the west side, the water is going which way?
On your side of the road, where's the water going to the sound?
My, my side, it's running back towards ditch.
No, I, this is.
Excuse me, back towards the ocean.
Towards the other way, towards, towards Highway 12.
No.
No.
The other way.
If it was, if it was running, it's running towards the ocean.
Okay.
Yeah.
Guys, I'd be, I would be in favor of having a hearing and having Doug Dorman come and stating in his opinion whether the ditch was functional or non-functional. And if it is a functional ditch, maybe he could give some suggestions on how he could even re-dig it or do something so we could be able to still do his development, have an easement.
That's fine, I think we need some larger maps, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's kind of, it's confusing, not saying anything.
And I apologize for that, I pulled it together this afternoon, and I will get better maps and have all this and have it appropriately labeled, and we'll see if NC, somebody from NC DOT can confirm that that culvert is there and what sort of status.
Have you had any survey work done yourself? Any more current survey maps that are yours?
The, the one you have is six, eight months old, the one from, the one from Rankin.
Okay. But he doesn't delineate the ditch on there, can you get him to show where the ditch is on that survey?
The whole, the whole, the skinny, the neck there, the skinny neck, that's all ditch.
So that's different, so the ditch is in the neck and not on the other property?
The ditch is the neck.
So that's different than the 86 survey that shows just a little chip.
Yeah, there's lots of new information emerging here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're going to have a hearing anyway, might as well get all.
Yeah, that's right. We got to have the hearing, so might as well, like you said, get all that information.
As much information as you can give the board to help you make your decision would be helpful.
Well, and I, I think we need to have the boundary of the 404 line, too. We have the 404 line outlining the .88 acres of Highland that's in the middle, but that's according to the little wetlands marks, that's inaccessible by the high ground, you have to cross wetlands. This doesn't have a wetlands boundary on the north side, which there is a boundary somewhere. I think before we have a hearing, we should have the wetlands delineated on this map.
The, the northern boundary of the wetlands as it runs along the, the neck of the, of Mr. Jeanette's property, do you want to have it confirmed by the Corps of Engineers as well?
Well, we need to know where the 404 lines are, yes. Because you can't fill 404.
You can, you can map 404, you can map wetlands.
Wetlands.
Yeah, the, the, the wetland consultant can go out there and map them, and then they're confirmed by the Corps of Engineers.
But the Corps, you might not get that for six months.
Yeah, you might, yeah, that's.
If.
I mean, I'm just confused why you need access to wetlands.
But he can, there's ways, other ways to cross wetlands besides filling them. I mean, if he, if the Corps will allow him to fill the ditch, and you all will allow him to fill the ditch, if there's other wetlands that he needs to cross, that's not within our purview, that would be up to him and the Corps as to how he would cross those wetlands. So if there is a, a wetland barrier to the high ground, even if we fill the ditch, he's got to find a way to either get a fill permit or build a bridge or whatever he's going to do to cross those wetlands if they're there. And that is kind of neither here nor there for us. Our ordinance says we can't allow them to fill a ditch if there's a health concern, and that would be a drainage issue for us.
Okay. So what day are we going to have the public hearing, then? Are we going to have it May the 6th, or are we going to have it May the 20th?
Typically, we have it the second meeting.
Yes, sir, we do. And I think that'll allow Mr. Dorman plenty of time to prepare whatever documentation and perhaps for the Corps to get back to us. I will have to notify the adjoining property owners, it says 10-day notice, and so I'm going to implement all of my typical public hearing notice procedures that I do for zoning amendments, just to make sure that we're getting the word out there.
Okay, is there a motion by the Board to set a public hearing? So moved.
Second.
It's motion by Commissioner Tobin, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Set a public hearing for 5:20.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like, say. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jeanette.
Thank you.
This line right here would be the 404 line.
The next item of business that I have is a status report on our housing amendments. Back in October, the, the Board adopted several amendments to the Dare County zoning ordinance relative to facilitating the development of year-round housing. And at the time that the Board did that, there were instructions to the planning director to come back in six months and report on the progress of those, and to identify other possible amendments that we may want to offer additional consideration. And so I am here, and that's what I'm doing this evening. It has been six months, and in that six months' time, let me back up and just go back and say what we did in October. We adopted duplex, we decreased the minimum lot sizes for duplexes, we expanded the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, to several of the zoning districts that allowed duplexes. We increased the density standards for multifamily, and then we included a new section in the group housing development section for cluster homes, which were tied to a certain square footage, a 1,200 square feet for each house, and an occupancy limitation of more than 30 days, a long-term occupancy is the term that we use. And so since that time, if I can get my PowerPoint to work here, guys. Sorry, it's just, there we go. So since that time, we have been moving slowly. We have had no building permits issued for accessory dwelling units, no duplex permits, no multifamily structure permits, but we have had two site plan approvals for cluster homes. One of those you guys approved just earlier this month, both, both of those are down in Hatteras Island. One was for three homes, and the other was for six homes, and we are hoping to get building permits issued for those here in the next couple of day, couple of weeks.
Donna?
Yes, sir.
Does it surprise you that we've had no permits for ADUs, duplexes, or multifamily structures after changing?
Um, not, not the multifamily, I'm not surprised by that because we just, we don't do a lot of multifamily construction. I've had several conversations with individuals about duplexes, and I've had conversations about the accessory dwelling units. And so, yes, I was surprised that we haven't issued any permits for at least one or two of them based on the interest that we had going into this.
Yeah, I mean, not to be negative, but I don't feel like our, our changes have had an impact then on what was an apparent urge.
I met with a developer last week who's looking at some multifamily mixed use.
Across the bridge, right?
Not, not in.
On the mainland, on the mainland?
No, on Hatters.
I think the cluster homes have been quite a step forward. Those are two big projects. I see success.
And it may be that six months is not a long enough time to adequately evaluate whether they're successful or not, but there have been conversations. You know, as Mr. Outen said, he's talking to people, and I have people that call me and say, and then, you know, they don't follow through. What the reason is for those, I don't know. I think some of the issue with the accessory dwelling units may be that folks don't have the capacity on their property to expand their wastewater systems. At least that's some of the feedback that I've heard, and that's a bigger issue, that's a state regulatory issue that we can't necessarily influence or change. So in terms of other options, I've got four other options that I have in your packet to discuss this evening. Expanding the cluster homes into the single-family zones, expanding the accessory dwelling units into the single-family homes, development of an overlay district for educational housing, and the study of minimum lot sizes. When we had the public hearing back in October, one of the public comments that we heard about the accessory dwelling units was, let's expand it into all of the districts and see if we can get some traction with that. And at the time, we felt like we wanted to just take baby steps, if you will, or take it one step at the time, and with the understanding that we would come back and maybe pursue that at a later date. And so that, that's the one option that we'll be talking about tonight. Extending the cluster homes into the other districts, there would be eight other districts that I think it may be appropriate to expand those to. The Natural Historic District, the RS1, the R1, the Skyco Neighborhood, the Waterfront Residential in Wanchee, the Village Residential in Wanchee, the East Lake Residential and the East Lake Natural Historic. When we talk about the cluster homes, they're still single-family homes, so there's not any conflict expanding those into the single-family districts because they would still be single-family homes, and it's not like we're introducing a duplex into a single-family district. And so I feel like that would, that's our, probably our most positive option that we can pursue, and we'll have to see, you know, what kind of feedback we get from the planning board, and as we work on the details or that, or what reception we have from, from the Board here. But, but we have had success with those, so maybe if we expand those into the other districts, we'll have some, some, some other projects coming forward with that. The same thing with the, with the accessory dwelling units. Let me get back to that slide. And this is just advancing faster than I want it to, faster than I can talk, there we go. The, expanding the accessory dwelling units into those same single-family districts, this is a little bit more tricky than the cluster homes, because we know that in some of these districts, there's subdivisions out there that have covenants that restrict those lots, they're private covenants separate from the zoning, that restrict those lots, and there may be conflicts with them, so how do you address those conflicts? The burden of the proof would be on them.
The burden to, to enforce the restrictive covenants is on the Property Owners Association, and if we get in the business of trying to see who complies with covenants and who doesn't, then we become the enforcement mechanism for the Property Owners Association, and that isn't our role. So we allow development if you meet parameters that meet our guidelines, but you have a second step that you have to do if you're building to meet your Property Owners Association. If you build in the village in Axhead, then the town will say you can get a permit to build this house, but you also have to have shakes on it, and you have to have the right kind of roof, and it's got to be the right color, and all those things that the village in Axhead requires in those covenants, but the town in Axhead doesn't enforce that. So our, my view is, is that we shouldn't get into that arena, because some of the way some of those things are drafted, some of them are murky, and it's going to put Donna and her staff in an awkward position trying to decide whether somebody met the Collington Harbor.
But there may be some properties out there that are in these areas that are not part of a subdivision, and those are the ones that we would be going after. And so when I say the burden of proof would be on the property owner, they would need to demonstrate that there aren't covenants that apply, and that's where I was going with that. And if Mr. Outen is saying that.
I don't think we get into covenant business at all, that's none of our business, that's a property rights issue.
We can take that one off the table right now if we want to, then.
Donna, to go back, talking about extending those L or 8 districts, was there a reason we didn't look at that in the beginning?
We were, for the cluster homes or for the ADUs?
ADUs. Were we trying to crawl before we walked, or what?
Yes, sir, we were trying to move slowly, and the logic was, is that we were comfortable putting the accessory dwelling units in those districts that already allowed duplexes, because you had two households on one lot. So what was the difference between a duplex versus a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit in the back? So that concept was already there, and introducing it into the more restrictive single-family districts was something that we were not willing to tackle at that time.
Okay.
So the next option, let me, is, is an overlay district for educational housing, and, and over the past couple of months, I know that the Coastal Studies Institute and the College of the Albemarle, and even the Dare County Board of Education, has indicated a need for housing for their students and for their teachers. And so one of the things that I think may be worth pursuing is to come up with some standards for an overlay district that we could dedicate, that was specifically for the educational component, and that if there was a site that became available, that we could apply that overlay district with the appropriate conditions that went with that, that it would only be associated with the Coastal Studies Institute, or the Board of Education, or the College of the Albemarle. Again, the details of that would have to be worked out, and where and what districts we would allow that, but I think that you could work single-family and multifamily components into that.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, can we have a little bit of discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We, we, well, I'll start. We've made great extensions to College of the Albemarle. The East Carolina University, the Board of Governors as a whole has made great extensions to Coastal Studies. We've got a lot at stake. We've, we've put in county money, taxpayer money, we've got bond money. In my opinion, I would urge this Board to consider bending over backwards to do what we have to do, because people aren't going to come to school here. We're doing something for future generations here, but if we're still addressing the issue of where we're going to put them, they're not going to come to school here. Our own kids will probably be fine, they can stay at home, but if we're going to track out area people, they've got to know they can come here and they can find something for rent. Roanoke Island, one of the task force recommendations was to make Roanoke Island a hub. We've got, this is the county seat of government, and the populace here, for the most part, has been willing to do what's necessary to make this an educational area here. So I, I would hope that we tackle this and do what we have to do for educational housing.
Well, I couldn't agree more, Commissioner. It's another step in the direction that we want to go to make, to make it work. And, and we've got to at least explore this to see if it's, it's something doing.
I, I wouldn't think that it would be unreasonable. I mean, if we can do it on Roanoke Island, I know we've got the town of Manio, but, you know, Mans Harbor is not a unreasonable drive. East Lake is. East Lake, uh, is not an unreasonable drive for people to come here if we've got options over there to go to school here. You know, what we look at is a commute compared to folks who live in urban areas, they would laugh. That's not a commute. You know, 20, 30 minutes? I'd do that to go 15 miles. Yep.
You got two answers to that one, though.
Yes, I'm not batting a thousand, but I'm getting there. So, minimum lot sizes and now this is, this is something that I've thrown in here because in some of the conversations that I've been having with people, you know, they say, Donna, you know, we can't get anywhere in case unless the county decreases the minimum lot sizes. And I will tell you that typically, the minimum lot size has always been the, the one thing that we didn't like to go in to tinker with. And a lot of that was based on the fact that we didn't have central water in the majority of Dare County. And there was the separation that you had to have from private wells and a septic system. So, there was a public health issue there. The minimum lot sizes that we have now have been in place since 1982. And they are 15,000 square feet for a lot that's served by central water and a pri- and a, and a onsite septic, or 20,000 square feet if you have a private well and you have, um, centr- uh, uh, onsite septic. And so, the majority of Dare County has central water. Now, the only areas that don't have central water are the mainland, except for Stumpy Point. Stumpy Point has central water. And, and so, maybe it's time that we go in and look at the minimum lot sizes. And I, I struggled with putting this on there because again, we've never, we've never gone in there and messed with the minimum lot sizes. And a lot of that has always been that, um, there's a perception that if you decrease the minimum lot sizes, that you are drastically increasing the density of the neighborhoods. And when you look at the density of a 15,000 square foot lot, it's 2.9 units per acre. If you decrease that down to 12,500 square feet, that's 3.5 units per acre. And if you go down to 10,000 square feet, it's 4.3 units per acre. So, overall, your density increase is not that great. And a lot of the property that has been developed in the last decade is on smaller lots that were recorded before 1982 and before we had the minimum lot sizes of 15,000 square feet. Collington Harbor, all of those lots in there are less than 15,000 square feet. We build on lots that are smaller than 15,000 square feet all day long. Hatteras Island, the bigger subdivisions down there on Hatteras Colony, they're small lots. And so, um, and the other thing that, that made me, uh, think that we could potentially consider this is that we do group developments now, um, where we have housing, single family homes on one piece of property, 30% lot coverage. You put in your roads and, and it's, it's one big piece of property and you have a footprint and everything else is in common ownership. The last one that we approved for this, not the cluster homes, but the group housing development that we did in Collington, it was two acres of land with 10 home sites. And when you do the math, that ends up being 8,700 square pe- feet per house. So, if you base that logic and transfer that to the minimum lot size, we're already applying a smaller minimum lot size to home sites and saying, w- we find this to be acceptable in a group housing setting. So, why would you not transfer that to another setting to where the lots are actually carved out and you're owning the land yourself? That, that's just my, my thinking. It may not get any traction with the planning board. It may get, if we send it to public hearing, it may not be received well. But I think that we need to at least be able to say that we studied the issue and we found it to be acceptable, or we found it to be unacceptable.
I agree.
Now, if that were to go through, Donna, would that also mean that a property owner who has a, uh, 16,000 square feet, that he can subdivide and have two lots?
It could, yes, yes. So, those replic- so, they could replicate itself. But if we, if we decide that it's appropriate to decrease the minimum lot sizes in the, in the interest of year-round housing, then we could include some, some conditions or some caveats on that that says, okay, you can do that, but you're, you can only do it for this. Or you can, we can, again, we might be able to do something with an overlay district. I think that that's the, the option in here that's gonna require the most thought and working out of the detail. But, but it may be something that is appropriate. I'm, I'm not sure. I think we need to, to pursue it a little bit more with the planning board and maybe hear from the public on it and see what happens.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
And so, um, the other thing is, is I felt like I needed to throw this in there just because, um, tiny homes, RVs, I get calls at least once a week from folks who want to put an RV on their property and live in it. And I have to tell them, no, you can't do that. You have to be in a campground. You can't live in it year-round. They're not built to the wind zone requirements. You can't, you know, there, we have floods here, you just can't do that. And so, I think as we move forward with this, we want to, um, be certain that our message is, is that we want year-round housing that's sustainable and that's safe and that, that doesn't include RVs and it doesn't include all that other collective recreational vehicles in, in that category. And so, I just felt that that was appropriate to put that in there. So, what, what is the next steps? The direction from the board to, to tell me to take this to the planning board and let us pursue this? Planning board can thoroughly analyze it. We can have public hearings and then you'll see me standing in front of you again in about three or four more months. And I'll stop right there and I see everybody shaking their head.
Is that the pleasure of the board?
That is the pleasure of the board.
Donna?
Just keep working at it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Donna, uh, and, and board, uh, is it reasonable? I mean, if you've got a tiny home, all right? We're trying to make the product accommodate the land. Is it reasonable to ask, okay, here's what we have in Dare County and probably other similar, similar coastal, uh, areas, you're gonna have to make your product accommodate us? Is that, uh, too much to ask? I, I've doubled some guys out of Hatteras and-
The only way to do that is to make it a permanent structure.
If you have a tiny home and you can meet the building code and you've got it elevated and you can do all the things the rules require, then yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But most of those are, uh, most of those are mobile.
But all of them are not.
No, no, no.
Wheels. Some are marquee on the ground.
Issue about the size of it, it's, it's the construction standard that's the issue.
Right. I- i- if the house is built to North Carolina building code, or if it's built as a mobile home or a manufactured home to the HUD standards, then that's not a tiny home. But a tiny home that's glamorized by the local, you know, by the, by the national TV networks, that you pull up on a trailer and you sit on the trailer, that they're truly mobile, that's an RV.
That's right.
And that, that's not what we're after.
Look what happened in the Keys with, uh, with some of the homes they had down there when, uh, this last hurricane came through. I mean, it just inundated the Keys and substandard housing.
Even if you all said, we want 'em to do it, we can't. Like, we don't make the building code. So, we don't have an option on that.
Right. I'm good.
Keep working it.
Okay, I can do that. But I will take off the ADUs and the single family districts based on Mr. Outen's input. I'll see you guys in a couple of months then.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Donna.
Chairman, item eight on the agenda is the Health and Human Services expansion and renovations. And Dave Clawson's gonna make that presentation.
Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. As you know, the Health and Human Services buildings were built in 1998. Matter of fact, the last debt payment is just coming June 1st. In the 2019 Capital Improvements Plan that, that the board approved, there were two items related to it. One was a study this year, um, to look at the facility and the estimated cost. The other was a, uh, an estimate of $2 million for expansion, which was originally to expand between building wings. Oakley Collier, the architects that did the Dare Center, were hired for the study. They came back with a report with three different options that we gave to you on the March, or during the March 6th board retreat. They recommended expansion, uh, renovations to building systems that are 20 years old, renovations within the, uh, building spaces themselves, and, uh, expansion in the middle between the two buildings of, of new construction. The board looked at, uh, option two, or, or on that day, March 6th, chose option two, which is, uh, in addition to 8,500 square feet to the existing 50,500 square feet. It includes around 250,000 of storm, uh, site work in stormwater, 16, 680,000 of renovation work to systems, 800,000 for renovations and changing the layouts within the existing buildings, 275,000 to fill in the two existing lobbies and make the second floor, uh, or create a second floor within those lobbies. A million 950 for the addition within or between the two buildings, 180,000 for walkways, 64 for millwork, um, 5% contingency and 10% for architectural and engineering. Just at 4 million or just below 4,850,000. Uh, I told you on March the 6th, and I'll, I'll confirm this again as we've gone through working on the capital investments fund, that there, there is the capacity in the plan to handle the, uh, 4,850,000. So, what we're asking is your approval to go ahead and issue an RFQ to hire the architects to get on the project.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions today? Would be the pleasure of the board.
I say what?
Option two. Yeah. Pardon? I would recommend we issue an RFQ to, uh, execute option two, second of the architectural plan.
Okay, and there's a motion on the floor to give staff direction to issue a request for qualifications for architects for design of option two by Commissioner Ross. I believe it was seconded by Vice Chairman Overman. The floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, item nine on the agenda is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes from April 1st, and then you have a water department, NCDOT, right-of-way encroachment agreement.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as, as presented by Commissioner House. Is that second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that would be your agenda.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to County- I will call the board back to order and turn it over to the County Manager.
Uh, in the closed session, the board consulted with the county attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege. We talked about a real estate matter and we talked about a personnel matter and approved the closed session minutes and took no action.
All right, that brings us, um, back to item 10. And I, I believe you completed your-
No, I had one-
You had one other?
One other matter of management. Today, I got a resolution from the town of Manio. I think there's one in front of you. It's a resolution supporting Senate Bill 215 and House Bill 429 in the North Carolina General Assembly for the regulation of navigable waters within the corporate limits of the town of Manio. Uh, they're looking for some, it's a local bill. They're looking for some local authority to regulate derelict vessels in their marina and in the sound there around that. And they've asked us, would we join in a similar resolution to ask legislature to, or support their efforts to get this local legislation passed? And so, I told them I would bring it to your attention tonight. And if you were so inclined, we would do a resolution for the chairman to sign on the same lines as the resolution that's in front of you.
What, what are Senate Bill 12, 215 and House Bill 429?
They're local bills-
Local bill.
To accomplish those tasks that are in that resolution in front of you.
Gotcha.
Pleasure to board.
Move to join in with the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve. Seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to our Public Information Officer, Dorothy Hester. Dorothy?
I've got a couple of items, actually. Last year, we worked with Drew Pierce and the Emergency Management Director to, and actually the other towns as well in the Park Service for the Love the Beach, Respect the Ocean campaign. Hopefully, you all remember it. There were a number of public service announcements with some professional surfers and some local people, and it said, "Live like a local." Anyway, last week at the North Carolina City and County Communicators Conference, that campaign, we got two awards.
Yeah. That's it.
And hats off to the staff. Skip received one for the public service announce- announcement with Quentin Turco. And Sarah, um, received one for the social media, let's see, it says best use of social media for program activity or campaign. So, hats off to the staff for that.
Yes, that's fair.
I wanted to mention that. And then, I got an email from Karen Brown today, who's the, of course, the chamber executive. And she's at a conference for the Carolinas, let me see what this says, Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives. And she, we worked together for a Destination Dare segment, um, to talk about our partnership with the county and the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. And, um, it's a short video, but that video won an award at her conference for the 2019 Communication Excellence Award in Advertising and Marketing in the Economic Development Commercial Video category. So, I just wanted y'all to know that because that's great news. And I think they, there's, here's a picture of the award on the screen. If you switch over, you'll see the award carried.
Got it, yep.
And let's show that video real quickly if y'all don't mind taking it-
Absolutely.
Welcome to the Outer Banks. With over 100 miles of beautiful beaches, we are a premier vacation destination with the perfect combination of recreation and history. A place to get away and relax. We have over 36,000 year-round residents that call Dare County home, and our summertime population tops 300,000 each week. While tourism is a thriving industry in Dare County, we are also home to many other industries that are productive and flourishing. Dare County is home to world-class boat builders. Boats built in Dare County are sold all over the world. Our commercial fishing industry is one of the busiest markets on the East Coast, with over 100 boats delivering fresh seafood to the docks of Wanchee weekly. The Outer Banks is home to many great restaurants. There are also distilleries and breweries producing fine rum and craft beers. Local artisan coffee roasters handcraft coffees for distribution outside of Dare County. Dare County provides great opportunities for small business entrepreneurs. There are small manufacturers producing apparel, printed goods, furniture, and custom surfboards. Many of these businesses have achieved success producing quality products in Dare County and shipping it all over the United States and the world. Artists, craftsmen, and bakers sell their goods to local shops, farmers' markets, and even outside the area. Restaurants display local artwork in photography. Web designers create sites for local businesses. And some residents can even work remotely while living in paradise. So, Dare County offers an environment for a diverse and robust economy that provides the opportunity for a business to start small and grow into a global business while living in one of the most beautiful places on the East Coast.
Consider Dare County to locate your business or to grow your existing business. The Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce and Dare County have created a unique partnership to support economic development in our community.
So, that's that. And, and then the last item I would, um, mention is our GIS department is working on a community map that'll be unveiled in a few months. And it's a pretty neat thing that they're doing. Kristin Stillson, who- Kristin Stillson, who received the Employee of the Month a few months back, is the one primarily working on that. But as we started talking about that with them, um, we, trash collection is one layer of that community map. And one of the issues that we have every year is trying to talk with our visitors about trash collection schedules, because people come down, they don't really know what town they're in. And on Hatteras Island in particularly, it wasn't so much, collection day is certainly an issue, but it's also rolling cans in and out. So, um, we have been working with GIS, and they get a lot of the credit for this, but we're, we're rolling out OBXTRASH.com. It's a, it's a GIS web application, and, um, we're gonna be going down to Hatteras next week to meet with the property managers, and we're also working with the Association of Realtors through their Property Management Association that gets their folks together. And what it's basically gonna do is allow people to go in, and it will find them if they're using a mobile device. And it's, Sarah, do you have it ready to pull up so they can see what it'll look like? This is, this shows you, um, she's gonna pull that up so you can see what a person would see if they went to OBXTRASH.com on their phone, and it shows what days your trash is collected, and then also offers tips, like roll your carts in and out, help us make the Outer Banks beautiful.
Also shows the recycle.
That's right.
As well. I, I think, uh, this is gonna be really nice. I've looked at it. Uh, I think our visitors are hungry for this, and this just provides them the information to give them what they want. They want, they wanna, they're environmentally friendly.
We'll see if she can get it up. Yeah.
You'll talk us through, Dorothy?
Sure. I've gotta put my glasses on. So you would actually type in your address, and she's on a desktop, so she's gotta type in. And, and here she's going to a particular area to find it, and then she's, and then you can click on your property. Um, and on the left, it says, this is your, here's an acknowledgement. This is, gives you some tips. It's Wendy, make sure, stuff in and outside. And then, once you acknowledge that, it gives you your collection information. So it's a really cool tool. Um, we have not officially launched it. The County Manager asked us to launch it by Easter, so we're ju, it's ready. Um, we've worked with the towns. They've put in their own information. In other words, they've given us the text that they want to communicate. So it's a partnership with them, and like I said, it's, it's really targeted to vacationers more than year-round folks. So we'll be launching it through property managers. And we do have a, Skip, who's our channels manager for Current TV, is working on some public service announcements, and we've been trying to get kinda creative. So we actually have a sample of a public service announcement. I hope y'all understand the humor in it, so Sarah will bring that. We're gonna show you that as well. And that will be all I, all the time. Here it is.
I'm so cold, and it's getting dark out here. Oh, I really hope the wind doesn't pick up. I've already had a couple of close calls today. Ah, oh, that was too close. I don't wanna be out here anymore. I feel so empty inside. This is so embarrassing. I'm the only one out here. Oh.
I provided the board some.
Yes, yes, yeah! I'm going home. Thank you.
I love it. That's great.
Thank you.
Don't make a lonely can. Pull your trash can in after trash collection. For more helpful tips, visit OBXTRASH.com.
That's good. That's good.
Yeah, so, just some updates on some stuff we're doing.
Cool. Good stuff.
Chairman, you asked about Easter. The idea was to get it out before the Easter people got here.
Getting that like this weekend?
Yeah.
We're close. We're about there.
Good deal.
So's Easter.
Deadlines.
That was good. That was good. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Don't have anything else good for us?
No, I'm, I'm stopped with that.
Yeah, did you, yeah, did you sell?
Yeah, you're not going first next time.
That's good stuff. So, thank you, Dorothy. Dave, anything else this evening from you?
No, I'll do that on Thursday at the.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, that brings us to, uh, Commissioners' business, and Jim, would you kick that off tonight?
Sure. Um, well, uh, we went to the, Harry Schiffman and I went to the MOA meeting down in New Bern, and, uh, just like to report that the fund is still very well-funded, um, which is a good thing. And, uh, really, the biggest part of the discussion that day was on, uh, the Corps of Engineers spoil sites. And the Corps of Engineers has taken the position that no longer can, they accept any spoils in their spoil sites from any private entity, or, or like the county could not put anything in any of their spoil sites. Well, that's a problem, because none of the local entities have any spoil sites. So, uh, we're trying to get them to find some common ground for the time being. Uh, but on the bright side of that, Dare County's in good shape, because almost all of our channels in Dare Counties are federal channels, and federal channels, regardless of who dredges the federal channel, can depo, make the deposits into their sites. So, uh, we can still use the site across from, uh, Juanchees if we want, as long as there's capacity. Um, and also, we had a task force meeting. Task force meeting went real well. Uh, talked a lot about the bridge removal. Um, the bridge removal, I don't know if everybody knows, but they're going to bend one seventy-four, one seventy-five, and one seventy-six and opening up a, an area there. Uh, the bridge, the decks of the bridge have been removed already, as have the piling caps, um, and the only thing left to remove at this point are the pilings, uh, which that's, they've started on that, too. Um, also, the barge that has all the, the, uh, bridge decks on it and the piling caps on it is scheduled to go out and make the first deposit at the artificial reefs this week. Uh, of course, that's weather-dependent, and so far this week doesn't look real great for them. But, uh, I know one of the things that, one of the rumors that's going around is that all of the bridge material has to be taken, I've heard to Greenville, I've heard to Norfolk area, I've heard all kinds of different areas, and be cleaned before it's deposited offshore. Uh, that's not true. They're taking it directly from the bridge to the barge to the disposal sites. That's all I got.
Wow.
Transfer it to Greenville to be cleaned.
Yeah. They're gonna power wash it and then put it in the ocean.
Wow. Wow.
The rumor mill.
Has ingress, any rest going, Jim, uh, for the fleet down there?
Uh, well, it's tight. They're still going, uh, out somewhere in the, uh, one fifty-four, one fifty-five, one fifty-six area. It's thirty-five feet wide. I can tell you that a very experienced captain hit the bridge the other day.
The old bridge?
The old bridge, yeah. Um, haven't heard anything about closing it or anything, and they should be done removing piles by the end of this month. So, you know, a couple more weeks and we'll be in really good shape.
How do they remove the piling from the old bridge?
Uh, they, they, well, take, pumps, pump down around it, then, then put tension on it with a crane and, and pump it right out. But that's gone, that, that's gone pretty well. Uh, the, the, that whole sequence of events has gone real smooth so far.
Things move faster than people thought.
Do what?
I think it's gone faster than people thought it would.
Right.
They're, they're ahead of schedule based on what they were saying initially that this.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Good deal. Thank you, Jim. Yep. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, sir. Uh, last week, on the ninth, Vice Chairman Overman, Commissioner Couch, Commissioner House and I attended the Legislative Dinner, Fish Fry in Raleigh, which was very, very well-attended, and addressed with the legislators there the importance on two key issues regarding the Marine Fisheries Commission and the impact on commercial fishermen here in Dare County, and also on recent inquiries and/or tentative proposals regarding, uh, sales tax laws. So I think that was both a productive meeting and efficient, so that was well worth our trip. And, of course, County Manager Outman, uh, was there with us as well.
That was, uh, that was Commissioner Bateman's cooking.
Commissioner Bateman was cooking, and I neglected to mention that, even though I took his picture and brought it home with me. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I omitted that. You were working hard there, Irvin, and, uh, well done.
He bred some mean flounder.
They called me the snowman. I had flour from everywhere.
Yes. It was outstanding, and that was my oversight. I apologize.
When he could find the fish he was cooking, it was really good.
Uh, we have, on the Album Oral Commission, a new finance director that just joined, or will join us on the twenty-second of April, Ms. Jerry Hanson. I have not met the new hire yet, but I look forward to doing so, and, uh, she will be the newest staff member, as our current finance director has elected to return to a horse form. It was all an amicable parting. We are very fond of her, but she elected to return to her family in a, a horse form that was taking a lot more time than she thought it would. Uh, next, also on the Album Oral Commission, we have something called the revolving loan program, and it is designed to make small business loans that banks do not feel worthy or are risk-worthy, and we've had some mixed results over the years. Yeah, and looking at our chair, he was formerly in the Album Oral Commission, is familiar with that. We are going to undertake a very serious review of whether or not that's a program that should continue. Again, it has had mixed results. They're typically few and far between. They require extraordinary administrative time and effort, and, uh, to coin an old expression, it's a very long walk for a very short drink. So I will bring back more information from our next Album Oral Commission meeting on that. Uh, I had the privilege today to meet our new auditor, just joined our staff a few weeks ago, Mr. Ernie De Bureau from State College, Pennsylvania, and we welcomed him today when we had an audit meeting just prior to the board meeting. Uh, I want to remind everybody that April thirtieth is Election Day. There's early voting going on, and, uh, urge everybody to cast their ballot. And finally, um, on an extraordinarily sad note, I'm sure everyone has seen the news coming out of France, out of Paris, and the burning of the Cathedral of Notre Dame, which is almost beyond belief. A seven-hundred-and-fifty-year-old cathedral burning to the ground in approximately six or seven hours. Uh, Vice Chairman Overman is looking at me with staggered, uh.
Check it out. Blow your mind.
The Cathedral of Notre Dame burned to the ground.
Burnt the ground.
Today.
Been in it.
Yeah, I suspect some of us here at the board have been. I have been, and the concept of that structure being gone is staggering. So I'm amazed that it's something this terrible could occur.
Any preliminary, uh, information on, as to?
No, there's been no speculation as to cause, other than a section was being renovated, and it was a multimillion-dollar renovation project, and there's some very, very loose comment about it might be associated with that. I've heard nothing about nefarious acts or bad actors being involved, so we don't know. But the sight of it burning was staggering.
Surreal, very, very.
Yeah.
Let's say it.
Yeah. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I do want to thank everybody that made it up to the, uh, the seafood legislative dinner. I heard from a lot of our commercial fishermen, and they really wanted to make sure that I mentioned to all of you that went, thank you for your support. Uh, it went, it was a very good dinner. Uh, we were able to talk to a lot of the, uh, representatives, and, uh, I was, I went up early in the morning and was talking to quite a few of the representatives and, uh, trying to express our views on some of the things that were going on, uh, from the fisheries standpoint, uh, and even actually coaxed, uh, I think, three different, uh, representatives that were on the fence whether they were, have time to go or not, and they made sure they went, and they were there. So I think that's a good positive cause of im, impact. I do want to put out a thank you to our first responders, especially firefighters from, especially Nag's Head, um, but also from Roanoke Island all the way up to Duck that responded to the house, the, the fire at the Christmas house, and they were fighting some very strong winds, and they did a remarkable job in saving part of the structure that they could. Um, it's just remarkable how, how well they work all together, and, uh, I just, my hat's off to them, and I just wanted to thank them for that. Um, I know at, uh, the last meeting, I had brought up, uh, House Bill four eighty-six, which was just another, uh, coinciding bill of, uh, bill that we have been against before. And in, in this bill, they're talking about, uh, different conditions for commercial fishing, and, uh, we have, this board has passed many resolutions a, against those, and, uh, we have put up another one. I had, uh, our clerk write another one, and I would like to, uh, have the County Manager read that, and I would like to have, uh, make a motion for it to be adopted by this board, and not only to be adopted, but also be sent to, uh, um, our two representatives, Hayning and Steinberg, also to our other local community, uh, communities, our, also our, our other local coastal counties, but mainly to our Wildlife Resources House Standing Committee. They will meet tomorrow at two o'clock in the afternoon, and this bill is on their agenda. So County Manager, could you read that for us?
Have we issued one similar to this in the past? I remember us.
Yes.
So this is a reiteration, uh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. This is a resolution opposing North Carolina House Bill four eighty-six that would change the definition of commercial fishing. Whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners has steadfastly supported North Carolina's commercial fishermen, who are a vital part of our state's history, heritage, culture, and represent a crucial component of the economy for Dare County and other coastal communities. According to the North Carolina Division Marine Fisheries, the sales impact of harvesting and sale of commercial seafood is three hundred and eighty-eight million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the income impact of employed commercial fishermen is a hundred and sixty-six million, sixty-six thousand dollars. And whereas House Bill four eighty-six proposes to drastically raise the annual commercial fishing license fee and impose burdensome requirements on commercial license holders who are still recovering from the devastation caused by Hurricane Florence. And whereas the introduction of House Bill four eighty-six is yet another attempt to redefine commercial fishing, which would be detrimental to North Carolina's commercial fishing industry. In fact, last year, the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission embarked on an effort to change the criteria of what constitutes a commercial fishing operation by opposing, among other things, that license holders document annual seafood landings of at least one thousand pounds. And whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners on January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, and again on February twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and yet again on June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, adopted unanimously resolutions opposing any change in the definition of commercial fish, fishing based on the following. No other professional license issued by the state dictates a level of participation in order for its holders to qualify. Furthermore, the definition of what constitutes commercial fishing in North Carolina has already been determined by the General Assembly and has long been established in Section one thirteen dash one sixty-eight of North Carolina General Statutes. Imposing an arbitrary level of partition based on landings would unfairly have a harsh and punitive effect on coastal communities hit by hurricanes and other national disasters, where many commercial license holders who in, whose income generating season may have been entirely wiped out by a storm are forced to temporarily divert their time and talents to other business enterprises. Those who engage in commercial fishing already suffer because of government overregulation that imposes severe quotas and unnecessary restrictions on fishing seasons, limits, and gear, forcing many to take on additional jobs and engage in part-time businesses in order to support their families. In October of two thousand and ten, the Marine Fisheries Commission enacted a Fishing License Review Task Force, which examined in detail the requirements for holding a commercial fishing license, included that the definition contained in the general statutes was adequate, and therefore, there was no real need to modify the definition of what constitutes a commercial fisherman. In its final report to the task force, clearly stated its recommendation that no changes are needed to the existing definition. Whereas House Bill four eighty-six is to, an attempt to fix something that is not broken and would jeopardize coastal communities whose economy and well-being are dependent upon both full-time and part-time commercial fishermen, who are small, independent businesses that work hard under. under adverse conditions to put fresh, healthy North Carolina seafood on American tables. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners reaffirms its unwavering commitment to North Carolina's commercial fishing industry by strongly opposing House Bill 486 or any other action that would change the definition of commercial fishing or cause harm to North Carolina's working watermen this the 15th day of April 2019.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve resolution opposing North Carolina House Bill 486 that would change the definition of commercial fishing. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, 650. Say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen. I've only got two more things. One of them is our little history tidbit on this day in history, a somber note. This was the day that President Abraham Lincoln succumbed to his injuries from assassination in John Wilkes Booth. And on the lighter side, we have Millie, who is a four-and-a-half-year-old black lab mix, and if you live at the coast, you've got to have a lab. They love water.
Had the Salt Life sticker.
And she is our Pet of the Week at the OBX SPCA. Please check her out and hopefully get adopted. Thank you.
Our Pet of the Week for this week is Millie. Millie is a four-and-a-half-year-old lab mix who just recently joined us. Don't let her white hair fool you. She's still young and energetic. She gets along wonderfully with cats, dogs, kids, you name it. Millie is a super sweet gal who will win you over in a heartbeat. To adopt Millie or foster one of our other animals, you can come and visit us Monday through Saturday at our shelter located in Manio. Come see us this week at the Waterfront Shops in Duck on Friday and Saturday, April 19th and 20th. We will be joining Bari Station for their Easter weekend tent sale and hanging out with Life's Beach for their annual Shop and Share event. We'll be there with several of our most precious pups that are available for adoption. For more information, visit our website at www-obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all we've got.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to the Governor's Volunteer Service Awards. You know, we have a county motto that says, "How will these decisions impact our children and families?" And another question is, where would we be in Dare County without people like these who volunteer their time and service to the various things that they work on? Dare County is very blessed to have them. You mentioned earlier the Saving Lives Task Force Town Hall that we had last Thursday night. State Representative Dr. Greg Murphy spoke. He is the point person in state legislature with, regarding all things opioid-related, and he did an outstanding job on his presentation and presented a lot of new information and was very helpful in telling us past, present, and future of what is going on with that in the state. You'll find at your places here a resolution to support the More Powerful North Carolina Opioid Awareness Program that has just begun to get started. That can be reached at www.morepowerfulnc.org. The resolution is pretty self-explanatory, and Bobby, if you would please read it into the record, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
This is a resolution supporting the More Powerful NC Campaign. Whereas, the opioid epidemic, overdose deaths, and substance misuse pose a threat to the life, health, and well-being of North Carolina residents. And whereas, life expectancy in the United States has declined for three years in a row for the first time since World War I, fueled in large part by a record number of drug overdose deaths. And whereas, most people die from drug overd, more people die from drug overdoses than car crashes, evidenced by the fact that more than 13,000 North Carolina residents lost their lives to unintentional opioid overdoses between 1999 and 2017. And whereas, the number of unintentional opioid overdose deaths in our state was nearly 17 times higher in 2017 than it was in 1999, and during 2017, more than 2,000 North Carolinians lost their lives to opioid overdoses, which represents an average of more than five people per day. And whereas, for every opioid overdose death, there are nearly two hospitalizations and nearly four emergency department visits in North Carolina, based on the 2017 data. And whereas, the opioid epidemic has contributed to a rise in hepatitis C and heart valve infections, endocarditis, among other serious and costly health consequences. And whereas, the opioid epidemic has contributed to a significant rise in the number and rate of hospitalizations associated with drug withdrawal in newborns, and has a rise in the number of children in foster care. And whereas, the economic cost of the opioid crisis exceeded $500 billion in 2015, equal to 2.8% of the U.S. gross domestic product that year, according to the White House Council of Economic Advisors. And whereas, the opioid epidemic has imposed significant and continuing costs on our healthcare, criminal justice, and social service systems. And whereas, the opioid epidemic has imposed major costs on private employers and overall economy due to excess six days, disability claims, diminished productivity, lost productivity due to incarceration and premature death. Whereas, the opioid epidemic, overdose deaths, and substance misuse causes pain, suffering, and loss to individuals, families, and communities that can never be measured. And whereas, an effective response to the opioid epidemic combines prevention, intervention, treatment, recovery, harm reduction, and law enforcement strategies, including those outlined in North Carolina's Opioid Action Plan and described on www.morepowerfulnc.org. And whereas, an effective response to the opioid epidemic requires commitment and collaboration among federal, state, and local governments, as well as healthcare providers, businesses, foundations, nonprofits, universities, colleges, schools, community coalitions, faith communities, and other community partners. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners will continue to actively join forces with others in addressing the opioid epidemic by encouraging community members with substance abuse disorders to connect with treatment recovery resources, offering support and assistance to their families and loved ones, and supporting community members in treatment and recovery by getting the facts about addiction, treatment, and recovery, and helping to dispel myths and misconceptions and reducing stigma. Be it further resolved that Dare County Board of Commissioners encourages community members to dispose of leftover medications and to secure needed medications that remain in the home, and encourages community members to talk to their children, their family, and loved ones about risks related to drug misuse and methods for coping with social pressure, stress, and other challenges. Furthermore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners will continue its effort to involve law enforcement, district attorneys, judges, court personnel, to connect individuals with substance abuse disorders to drug treatment and other services as recovery courts, adopted this the 15th day of April 2019.
The motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve the resolution supporting the More Powerful North Carolina Campaign. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that, apologize for the length of this. We got a sort of a resolution to go by from the group that we're talking about here, the More Powerful North Carolina Campaign, and we tried our best to summarize some of those things. You'll notice that Dare County is already doing a number of the things that they list in the resolution through the various groups, including the Saving Lives Task Force, of which most of these groups are members. Dare County, again, is blessed and fortunate to have groups like this who give their time to work on these issues, and I would appreciate your approving of this resolution. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Saturday, CSI held an open house. It's, I think, the third or maybe fourth one they have done, certainly the third one, and had about 250 people who came to tour the facilities there and see the things that are being worked on as research projects by CSI people. If you have not attended one of those, I think you'd find it very interesting. They have a lot, and I mean, several classrooms on at least two floors, that they have everything in there from sand all over the world to show you what sand looks like on beaches, anywhere in the world you want to look at almost, right down to the people who are diving well over 200 feet to video wrecks, and it is quite interesting, and they have video to show of those dives and things like that. So, it's not just a pretty building on the sound. They've got some really good stuff going on there. And I would mention, just lastly, that Recovery Court, that Commissioner Bateman and I have worked on for some time now, is operational. I want to thank this Board again for supporting that, and we'll have an opportunity to talk about that a little bit more on Wednesday, I would suspect. So, thanks again. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes. Couple of things that feel good, good county employee kind of thing I want to tell you about. So, I got a call from Gary Perry, who's in Merritt Kitty Hawk. It's about a month ago, and he said, "Listen," he said, "you've got a driver on one of your trash trucks." Gets out of the truck, well, my trash can is knocked over, and stands it back up. And he's always, she's always smiling at me, very, very nice. Her name is Jan Burrows. And I said, "Okay," I said, "I'll bring it up sometime on my agenda." Well, last, even last week or before last, it was raining, and I went out to my, looked out my window, and my trash can was knocked over, and this girl got out of the truck and picked the trash can up and threw some trash back in there and got inside and did the maneuver to put it back. That's dedication, and I think we are, you know, we have great employees throughout the county. That's just the example of what we do have working, so I thought it was a good, feel-good thing.
Absolutely.
Once again, I want to congratulate all the folks with the Governor's Award. Once again, makes Dare County what it is. It's the best place to be anywhere and to live. I went to the Greg Murphy, Dr. Greg Murphy that Wally set up, and what I got out of that is, the big thing is 14 people die. Every 14 minutes, somebody dies. Every 14 minutes, somebody dies of opioids in the United States. That's crazy. I mean, this is, since we've been sitting here, we've lost a lot of people with this disease. He was very informative. He spoke from a physician's standpoint, and he also spoke from a caring standpoint of legislator, trying to appropriate money. He's done great things with the STOP Act, as well as the HOPE Act. Nothing I took away from that, there's $12 million that's being funneled down from the Governor's Office, 12 million. We need some of that money. Some of that money, I looked at how it's, the guidelines or what it goes to, some of it are for Recovery Court, so we could get some of that money possibly paid for the 120-some thousand dollars we budgeted possibly. The other is for treatment, for education, maybe getting for a detox. We could have possibly a soft detox here on the Outer Banks with some of that money we could start, maybe partner with a hospital. There's no area down here in Dare County that someone can go to a detox. We have to truck them off to Washington, to Ahoski, to Wilmington, to Raleigh, to Greenville. And majority of the time, according to Michelle Harbach, I talked to her, the wait time is anywhere from 48 hours to four days. And so, by the time the individual has all of a sudden said, "I don't want to go anymore. I'm better," and somebody's off again, stealing, driving drunk, doing other drugs. So, these are monies that if you guys agree that we can apply for these grants, it can help us out, and we can be on top of this thing. And so, I'm just throwing that out there to you for a discussion, see what y'all think. And I know for the Recovery Court, that's definitely in there, for treatments in there, for detoxes is in there, and also for educational purposes.
Absolutely. We should take advantage of that.
Yeah, most definitely.
Yeah.
That's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
And how do we make that happen? Let me ask you that.
Well, we've got a meeting Wednesday. Let's talk about that and see how we make that happen.
I'll be with you all morning tomorrow. I'll find out how to make that happen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That, will that work?
Yes, sir.
Talk about it at retreat. Okay. Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir. Dare County Waterways Commission had another good meeting. We met Monday a week ago. Fletcher Willie, who has been on Waterways for the better part of 20 years, has resigned. He's, his lovely wife is dealing with some health issues, so he's felt that it was, the time was, the time was good for him to step down. One of the things I admire about Fletcher is that he came prepared for every meeting. He's just got, comes in almost like an attorney. He's got notebooks full of stuff. I've asked him for a lot of his stuff, really good notes of what's occurred, how to prioritize things here going forward. Next Waterways Commission meeting, we've got two very excellent speakers, and it will be here in Manio. It's the second Monday at 7:00 right here on the campus. I encourage the public to come out and see that and experience it. Also, I've been following, I'm really appreciative of Irvin and Wally, actually, the entire Board, Rob, Steve, Bob, Jim, myself, have done a good job. I think we've all been there and know what goes on with youngsters in their lives. They have pressures that, you know, we didn't have when we were kids. I mean, the worst thing I had to deal with, well, let's just not go there right now.
I'm sure they're well-known stories.
Yes, they.
They've removed your picture from the poster.
But I think the Recovery Court there, the coordinator, they selected Emily Urch. Reading her background, I mean, she's tailor-made for that position. I think the enthusiasm is there, and I think we're going to see good things out of that. We need to support that Recovery Court. Yes, it's in operation in other areas. We're nevertheless going to be blazing new trails with that, and I think we can really, we've got the vehicle here to begin to continue to make a difference. I wanted to thank this Board also for the Legislative Seafood Dinner efforts, but I was just so proud of, you know, our guys. Yes, Hyde County had a good showing, Carteret, but you know, our guys, they were there working their rear ends off, and Irvin, he did. He bred and flounder for about two, two and a half hours and just stepped in there to do it, but we had a lot of influential legislators come out. It was very, very social. Rob and myself had a chance to talk to some pretty influential people. I continue to be appreciative of the attention that being paid to us by Representative Hanig and also Bob Steinberg. I think we've got big things in store for us. I know they have confidence in this Board. I'm proud to be a part of a Board that's got the confidence and the security of those men that they have in us. And business is really going. I know Easter coming late is a little bit of a hamstring. You know, when Easter comes early, I think it really does provide a kick in the pants for us, for our shoulder seasons, but we've got four new restaurants, either change of ownership, or new restaurants down on Adderall, so Labor Pool is what it is, so you're going to see some owners with aprons on, but we're busy, and there's a lot of activity on the highway. And I also want to thank Dorothy for allowing me to take a look at the OBX trash. Again, I'll reiterate that I think our visitors are hungry to do what they can for the environment, and I think this OBX trash has got big, big potential here. And that's all I've got. I'm looking forward to, as we're going forward here with the dredge, and we're going to be very busy. I know that as the summer comes in, we all have livings to make and stuff, but nevertheless, I'm looking forward to the good work that this Board is doing. Also, our county staff, the budget process has gone swimmingly well. It's grueling, but this year, thanks to Bobby and Dave and Sally and the folks upstairs, we're in a real good position for fiscal year '19 and '20. I'm thankful the work that was done. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. The only thing missing in that trash can ad was you popping out that trash can like Oscar.
We can arrange that.
Like Oscar. You should have been in that video popping out that trash can like Oscar.
Absolutely. I've been in Maryland. We can do that.
Can we do a little touch-up on that, Dorothy? And have Danny pop out that trash can like Oscar?
Just Photoshop it.
They'll be more motivated. They'll be more motivated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just one other item that I have before we adjourn. I've got the pleasure of having Dorothy go with me tomorrow. We have a, I have a trustee meeting, a COA, but I'm doing my COA presentation to that board tomorrow, so Dorothy will be there to assist me with that. So we'll be heading to East, Elizabeth City tomorrow to do another COA presentation. So looking forward to that. Anything else from the board? With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, May 7? Can you believe that? And it's 2019, unbelievable.
Move to adjourn.
Huh? Motion by Commissioner House to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.